Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. One more time, I need everyone in the council chambers to please be quiet so I can call the meeting to order. Calling this meeting to order and I need everyone in council chambers to please be quiet so we can provide instructions on how the meeting will proceed. The council meeting is now called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Kent City Council Meeting for June 4th, Tuesday, June 4th. If everyone could please rise and join me in the flag salute.
(inaudible)
Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud? Councilmember Troughtonner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting has been called to order. Our agenda has been published. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nothing from staff, Your Honor.
All right. Hearing no changes, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I have two statements that I would like to read as we start the meeting this evening. The first one is some general instructions about how the meeting will proceed. I know that there are a number of attendees present tonight, and I want to thank you for your attendance and interest in your local government. For those of you that have not attended a council meeting before, this meeting is a time for the city council to collect as a whole, conduct its business, and receive information from city staff and others who have been invited to make presentations. While the public is welcome to observe this meeting, public comment may only be provided orally during the time period provided for it on the agenda. Given the number of people in attendance tonight and the amount of business requiring action by the council, we will be limiting public comment to two minutes per person. Speakers that require assistance of an interpreter, that time is included in that limit. No other public comment may be provided orally, and it is a crime in the city of Kent for any person to intentionally interfere with this meeting by causing a substantial disruption. Not only is it a crime, but if any person causes that substantial disruption, council will recess this meeting, clear City Hall, and reconvene the meeting with only city staff and members of the media present. I'd also like to read a statement of information to why I believe many of you are here this evening. So, "The city is aware that on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, a number of asylum seekers from Venezuela, Congo, and Angola set up a camp on property being leased by King County located on Central Avenue on the south side of 167. The city understands that these individuals moved onto county-controlled property without the county's permission or knowledge. King County has advised the city that the individuals do not have permission to be on that property and are trespass from the property. King County has asked for the city's assistance with that situation. The property in question is under the authority and control of King County, which has leased that as a part of a larger property transaction during the COVID emergency. The city of Kent does not own or control the property in question, nor does the city own or control the hotel adjacent to that property. On Sunday, June 2nd, the city provided the asylum seekers with King County's notice that they must leave and posted notices on the property. Kent police personnel were intending to return to the site to provide notice of the need to leave in a variety of languages. Today, the city was advised by King County Sheriff that they will not participate in enforcement of that trespass order. The city will not take action in the enforcement of the trespass without full partnership from King County. The current immigration issues are of national and statewide concern. Neither South King County nor King County as a whole have the resources to address these concerns. It is appropriate for the federal government to step in, and in its absence, the response to this issue must be spread across the entire state and not concentrated in South King County." All right, with that, we are going to go on with the business of our agenda this evening. First item we have is under public recognition is our Employee of the Month. So each month, employees here at the city of Kent come together and they nominate one of their coworkers who has provided outstanding customer service, exemplified the mission, vision, values, and goals of the city. I am very pleased tonight to announce that our June 2024 Employee of the Month is Kristi Stewart. Kristi is our June Employee of the Month. She originally started working at the Kent Municipal Court on February 2nd, 2001, as a judicial specialist. She was promoted to a lead in 2006. Under the direction of the court supervisor, Kristi assists in planning, organizing, and coordinating administrative functions of the Kent Municipal Court to relieve the court administrator, supervisor, and judges of administrative details. She provides training on all elements of court clerk-related duties and assures proper collection, receipting, and accounting of revenue and expenditures from court activities. Kristi was nominated because of her strengths, and they include exceptional positive attitude and her customer service focus. She takes great pride in providing excellent customer service to all of our court contacts. She truly cares about the people she serves and shows genuine empathy. She is very hardworking and always willing to help others. Her vast knowledge of the court system allows her to complete any task and fill in whatever needed. She is always available to answer questions, find solutions, and not afraid to jump in and help wherever that is needed. She's an amazing leader and a team player. Kristi is an outstanding trainer. She is very thorough, explains the processes clearly, and answers all questions that may arise. She is a wealth of information and shares that knowledge with everyone. She thrives on building up people and helping them do their best. She is knowledgeable, professional, pleasant, positive, and outright a great person, and Kent is very, very lucky to have her. If we could please give a round of applause to our June Employee of the Month. All right, the next item on our agenda is our proclamation for LGBTQ+ Pride Month. I've got, I'm not, Tepatasi, is that, am I close?
No.
No? And Adriana? Okay. If you could join me up at the podium, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll do some photos and we'll present it. All right, so it says, "Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall riots and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual rights movement. And whereas LGBTQ+ residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Kent contribute to enrichment of our city, and whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members, as well as provide allyship. And whereas, while future further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas the city of Kent, in partnership with communication and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas LGBTQ+ residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Kent, Washington. The city council and mayor invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding, and join us in this special observance and recognition of the numerous contributions of our LGBTQ individuals in our city." We're going to go, we're going to do a quick photo. I misled you. I said, "Come to the podium," and I actually, you know.
Salavala. I feel like I've attended a lot of proclamations in the past year. Unfortunately, my partner, who I normally come with, was unable to attend us tonight. So distinguished mayor, esteemed members of the city council, and honored guests, I see there is a diverse and beautiful faces that are here with us today. And in that light, I will keep this statement short. I'm deeply humbled and honored to stand before you today, accepting this pride, too, Spirit, LGBTQIA+ proclamation on behalf of Utopia Washington and the diverse communities that we have. This proclamation is a powerful testament to the values of equality, acceptance, and love that this city continues to uphold. At its core, pride is a celebration of identity, visibility, and resilience of queer and trans people across the United States. It is about reclaiming spaces, voices, and narratives that have been historically marginalized or silenced. However, the journey to equality is fraught with challenges as well. This year alone, there have been 515 anti-LGBTQ legislation and five within the state of Washington. We are fortunate enough to have strong leaders to advocate for change of equality within this state and have defeated all five. Though we have prevailed, these are still ongoing issues that the queer and trans people of our state and nation continue to face. Pride Month had deep roots in the history of LGBTQ movements. It began as a response to the systemic oppression and violence faced by our community. The Stonewall riots were led by some of the most courageous and inspiring figures in our LGBTQ history. Among them were Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera. Often regarded as the mothers of pride, stood as the forefront of the struggle of LGBTQ rights, fighting not only against violence but also against the broader societal discrimination that sought to silence and erase our identities. Their legacy remind us that the pride is rooted in the fight for justice and equality for all, especially the most marginalized. As we gather here today, one of the most diverse cities in the United States, we must recognize that our commitment to justice extends beyond the LGBTQ community. Immigration justice is also linked in our movement. In the heart of healing justice that honors our humanity, we also have a call for support for the current needs of our immigrant community from Congo, Angola, and Venezuela, who are currently living in horrible conditions and seeking support. Families, women, children, refugees who are currently in our city are seeking one of the most necessities to be able to thrive. Our ask to the city of Kent is to collaborate with King County to ensure that the immediate housing needs be made available, but most importantly, to also trust your community organizations to provide the necessary support for our refugees to find employment and to sustain their newfound home in our state. Together, we can sustain a world where love is love, where equality is given, and where every individual can live their life with pride. Faftey t'elava.
All right, we are going to move on. The next item on our agenda is community events. Council President, community events.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have graduations, graduations, graduations happening for the next few weeks, and we have Taquilla School District graduation this weekend, along with Kent School District graduation. So congratulations to all 2024 class graduates. And this goes on until end of June, so that is all I have at Showware Center.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This coming Wednesday, which is tomorrow, the 5th of June, 6:00 PM, right across the street in Centennial Center is the Summer Art Exhibit. So come down, see some fabulous art, meet the artists, and have a good time. 6:00 PM tomorrow.
All right. We'll move on. Next item on the agenda is reports from council. I will keep mine brief this evening before I turn it over to our chief administrative officer. Couple of things. Last week, had the opportunity to attend the Puget Sound Regional Council Annual Meeting, so that is the planning organization for the four-county area. We passed the annual budget, and we had an opportunity to hear from Congressman Rick Larson about his focus on transportation. He is the likely incoming chair of the Transportation Committee and will be continuing to work on making sure that funding for all of those necessary transportation projects come back to Washington State. So we are really, really fortunate to have that leadership here representing the four-county region. In addition to that, I had an opportunity to attend Memorial Day services out at Tohoma National Cemetery. They do an amazing job honoring all of our veterans and specifically focused on those that gave their life in the line of duty defending our country and our democracy. So very, very grateful to have Tohoma so close to home. Last thing, want to recognize the 2nd and 5th grade classes from Parkside Elementary. They helped us cut the ribbon when we opened our Salt Air Vista Park not too long ago and had me out for their celebration day. Really, really grateful to get to interact with those students. And then today, I had the chance to speak with our 5th graders at Kent Elementary. They prepared questions. We spent a couple of hours talking about what government looked like in the city that they were in, how they could be good members of our community, provide service, and just all of the variety of things that were on their mind. So always appreciate those opportunities to talk to our students. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time, I'm just going to refer to my report, which is in the council packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our council workshop this afternoon, and we had one item on there, traffic calming update, and that information, that video is actually available on our Facebook and YouTube and on Kent TV 21. The presentation was about all the traffic calming projects that are going on within our city. We have seen over 180 requests come in since 2018. We made some changes to the traffic calming programs in 2022, and we have seen great improvements in residents being involved in the process. And they have, we have installed speed bumps on those streets. In the post-installation studies, they have seen a reduction in traffic and reduction in actual speeding. So if any of our residents want to be involved, or they think that their street or their neighborhood needs some type of traffic calming, they can download Kent Works app, or they can just email our Public Works Department or even our city council, and we'd be able to forward that request. And that is actually all I have. I did not have any regional meetings, so I will start over with my colleagues. Councilmember Troughtonner.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. I am vice chair, and I serve along with Councilmember Larmour and Councilmember Boyd. We will have our next meeting on the 13th at 5:30 at the station on 84th Avenue South, I'm sorry, the Training Center. Something else to mention is Saturday, July 13th, which is also a busy weekend because we have corn days here in Kent, but there will be a CPR awareness and job fair from 10:00 to 5:00 PM at Showware Center. They will have CPR training for all ages, and then there's an opportunity to visit with members from the local public sector agencies to talk about careers with police, fire, public works, IT, and more. So put that on your calendar. And then I'm also on the Regional Transit Committee. Our next meeting is June 10th, where we will have a field trip out to the Metro Transit Center in Seattle. And Madam President, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troughtonner. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam President. Likewise, I have not had a regional meeting since our last session, so I will have a report next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, Madam President, I don't have a report either, but I do want to, just before I forgot to talk about for us, events. We do have Juneteenth coming on Saturday, June 22nd, at More Mella Park, and it's from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Likewise, I don't have a lot to talk about, except for we had the round two council joint meeting this past week, and there was a lot of stuff talked about, a lot of stuff that's in planning, and a lot of stuff that staff and the city wants to do. So look forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. We had the King Conservation District redistricting committee meeting, and so we have come down to our two final maps that we are going to be sending out for public comment. So watch for that later this month. We hope to have all the public comment done by the end of the month. Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, we had the, I had mentioned before, we were reading the Social Injustices and Mental Health. We had the author of that come out. We had a half a day with her, and it was fabulous. In the interest of time, I won't go further on that. And remember, Wednesday, 6:00 PM, the art, the summer art exhibit happens, and that is it. You already heard about Public Works.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
All right. Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. That brings us to item number seven, public comment. Public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to the business of the city of Kent or agenda items council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including the support or opposition of a ballot measure or any candidate seeking office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches but must instead speak concerning a matter on the city council's agenda or matters concerning the general business of the city of Kent. Further, in providing public comment, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole. Remarks intended to target individuals on the dais will not be permitted. Finally, please note that the public comment period is an opportunity for you to provide information to the mayor and the city council and that you would like them to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. The council, the city clerk will now announce our speakers. When called to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record, and then your comments. Again, we will have a two-minute timer on the screen.
The first speaker is Linda.
Thank you. Can you call the speaker one more time, please?
Yep, Linda.
Linda?
Buenas tardes.
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 Linda?
Buenas tardes. opportunity for political campaign purposes, including the support or opposition of a ballot measure or any candidate seeking office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but must instead speak concerning a matter on the City Council's agenda or matters concerning the general business of the City of Kent. Further, in providing public comment, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole. Remarks intended to target individuals on the dais will not be permitted. Finally, please note that the public comment period is an opportunity for you to provide information to the mayor and the city council and that you, that you would like them to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. The council, the city clerk will now announce our speakers. When called to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record, and then your comments. Again, we will have a two-minute timer on the screen.
The first speaker is Linda.
Thank you. Can you call the speaker one more time, please?
Linda.
Linda. Linda. Spanish? Okay. Hi, my name is Kevin Martinez. I will be translating for our Spanish speakers today.
Buenas tardes para todos. Mi nombre es Linda.
Good afternoon, my name is Linda.
Estoy en representación de todos los venezolanos.
I'm representing all Venezuelans.
Angola.
Angolans.
Colombia.
Colombians.
And Congo.
And Congo.
Nuestra petición hacia todos ustedes.
Our petition for every one of you.
Es para pedirles de corazón y de por favor.
Is so that we can ask you through, from our hearts.
Que si nos pueden ayudar.
If we can get some help.
Todos los que estamos aquí somos inmigrantes.
Everyone who's here is an immigrant.
No ha sido fácil para nosotros pasar tantos países.
It has not been easy to come through several countries.
Pasamos la selva.
We went through jungles.
Costa Rica, Honduras.
Costa Rica.
Muchos países para poder llegar acá.
Many countries to come here.
Pasamos algunos secuestros, violaciones en México.
We experienced kidnappings, violations, or molestation.
Venimos de nuestros países porque de verdad nuestros países, tanto Venezuela como las demás comunidades.
We come from our countries, Venezuela and many other communities.
Tenemos muchos problemas.
We have a lot of problems.
Nosotros no estamos acá en Estados Unidos.
We're not in the United States.
Porque queremos como venir e invadir su espacio.
We don't want to come invade your space.
Ni mucho menos hacer una carga para el gobierno.
And don't be a burden for our government.
No es la primera reunión que hemos tenido.
It's not the first meeting that we've had.
Hemos ido para el condado.
We've been to county.
Y no hemos recibido respuesta.
And we haven't received a response.
Como nosotros se lo hemos pedido de por favor.
Like how we've asked for, as a favor.
Necesitamos que nos ayuden con el asilo político.
We ask that you help us with asylum.
DPS.
DPS.
If we can wrap up the comments, the timer is running.
Este, DPS, para que nos llegue nuestro permiso de trabajo para nosotros.
Get our permit for work.
Trabajar y pagar nuestra vivienda.
So that we can work and we can.
Y no ser una carga para el gobierno.
Thank you. So that we are not a burden for the government.
Solamente le pedimos que nos ayuden.
Next speaker is May Gualida.
Gracias.
Thank you.
May.
May Gualida.
May Gualida.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, we really do need to stick to the two-minute time limit, and I will unfortunately have to cut speakers off once they hit that time, that two-minute time limit.
Let's start with that.
They're just a bunch of them. They're not numbered, so. All right, if you could start your public comment, please.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es May Gualida Álvarez.
My name is May Gualida Álvarez.
Representación de la comunidad ágoleña, africana, y venezolana.
Angolan, Venezuelan, and Colombian.
Yo voy a ser concreta. Nosotros le pedimos que por favor.
That we ask, please.
Si nos pueden colaborar con, que nos hablan el hotel que les queda.
With the hotel.
What's the name of the hotel? Colombia.
It kind of like.
Este, nos vemos casi más de 200 personas.
There's more than 200 people.
Entre niños, adultos, y jóvenes.
Kids, adults, and youth.
Durmiendo ahí, pasando frío bajo la lluvia, con el frío.
Under the rain, under cold.
Pasando en, viviendo en carpas.
And living in tents.
Ya que nosotros estábamos en unos hoteles en Kent.
We were in hotels in Kent.
Y se nos cumplió el tiempo que teníamos ahí.
And our time was finished.
Necesitamos, por favor, su ayuda.
We need your help.
Se compaquen con nosotros. Nosotros lo que queremos es tener un tiempo estable. Para poder solicitar nuestro trabajo, nuestro permiso de trabajo.
So that we can solicit our permit for education.
Y terminar de sacar nuestros papeles para el asilo.
So that we can have our papers for asylum.
Para no ser una carga para el gobierno.
So that we're not a burden for our government.
Y poder pagar nuestro asilo.
So that we can, so that we can work and we can pay our living status.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is TJ Peterson.
TJ. Mayor, Council President, City Council, everybody, thanks for the opportunity. My name is TJ Peterson. I've been in Kent for a minute. We all know each other. Just want to read this real quick. Who we are, our vision as a city where people choose to live and businesses change the world. Our mission, the City of Kent is committed to a safe, thriving, sustainable, and inclusive community. I've heard we're a welcoming city. I don't see any asterisks or exceptions or any of this kind of thing. I'm thinking this is a people thing. My council members, my mayor, are we living up to these values? That's just a question. I'm going to leave that hanging out there for now. Regarding the Connaught Lodge, in 2000, the King County bought that dilapidated, contaminated motel, spent tons of money to rehabilitate those rooms that's ready to go. Some people in our city kind of got sideways on that because they were worried they were going to use it to house homeless. They were worried that they were going to house people that might be different or dangerous, or I don't know, I'm not really sure. There was a big incident. A gentleman was brought there over COVID, and he left, and he might have shoplifted a donut, and then he left. Everybody lost their mind. I'm asking my city and my council to open up that understanding, memorandum of understanding with King County. Once you litigated with them over that housing option down there, I don't know if it was a business thing, if there was a property value thing going on there, but these are people. I'm honored that we have a chance to discuss this. I'm honored that we have these visitors and guests to our city, and I think we really need to live up to our mission. And this really shows who we are today. Thank you.
The next speaker is Perry Sobelik.
I would also ask that you hold your applause. It will help us get through the speakers in a, in a timely and professional manner, please.
Perry Sobelik, resident of Kent. I didn't expect a crowd like this. My practiced remarks tonight were actually designed for what was the original three-minute presentation, so they will last longer than two minutes. So I will not be able to present my entire presentation in only two minutes tonight. So you can be sure I will be back probably the next time you guys meet. However, since it has been, I've got a minute forty-five to use up here, what I'd like to bring to your attention is the fact that this kind of arbitrary change of the presentation time, and I understand there's a large crowd here and there are a lot of people that need to do, to be heard tonight, but I would bet you every single person in here would be willing to listen to one extra minute of everybody, because that's how important this is to them. And I think the arbitrary truncation of their First Amendment rights to present, as you originally said, open comments from the public, it seems a bit disingenuous, actually, because you're, you're cutting everybody short. These people are all willing to listen to all of their, all of their friends and all their neighbors and all their new people, and basically you're cutting it short to accommodate your own schedule, at least that's how it does appear, okay? And so consequently, I think it's, it's a kind of a sad situation that these people are not going to be granted the same amount of time for presentation to make their, their voices heard that typically they would any other time at the City Council. So, and also the fact that you did this with no notice, this, you know, we walked in and boom, oh, all of a sudden, you only got two minutes. So I'll be back. I'll have my moment, my, my notes are still here. I'll be ready to do this, and I'll be able to see you guys, and I'm sure you'll be more than happy to see me again, as always. But I, I think you should give these people their due, because they're here because they care, because they have something that's important to them, and indeed should be important to every single one of you. In fact, should be important to all citizens of Kent. And cutting them short does them a disservice. Thank you for your.
Next speaker is Ionathan.
Kim, if you could call the next three speakers, and then we can have folks line up, that would be. Ionathan, Andrea Joslin.
Andrea Joslin.
Hola, buona, mi nombre es Jonathan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jonathan.
So Angolan.
I'm Angolan.
Yeah, estoy aquí cinco meses, cinco meses.
I've been here for five months.
Yeah, y estoy pasando pela dificuldade que todo mundo que está aquí en mi atrás está pasando.
I'm going through the same troubles as everyone who's here behind me is going through.
No quería dar mucha vuelta en falar porque ya faleí eso en casi todos los gabinetes de, de los consejos de Seattle, de King County.
I don't want to repeat myself because I've spoken at every public opportunity I've had in King County, Seattle.
Y casi nunca llegamos a una solución, hasta hoy que tenemos una oportunidad de tener una solución.
And it seems like we never reach a solution, until today where we have a real opportunity to find one.
Por eso vengo a pedir a ustedes.
That's why I come here to ask you.
En el nombre de todo este pueblo que está en mi atrás.
In the name of all these people who are here behind me.
Que conceda la permisión para que abra ese hotel ecológico.
That you grant permission to open the Connaught Lodge Hotel.
No es mucha cosa.
It's not a big thing.
No estamos a pedir dinero, no estamos a pedir, nosotros estamos a pedir, o sea, los papeles assinados.
We're not asking for money, we're not asking for anything. We just need you to sign the papers.
Sé que va a llevar, quebrar algunos acuerdos, pero sé que pueden hacer eso.
We know that it's going to take some doing and might, might require you to make deals, but we believe that you can do it.
Olviden para las crianzas, más viejos, tiene mucha gente aquí.
Look at the children, the elderly. Many of them are here.
Personas están ficando doentes, pasando ese frío, el viento, la lluvia.
People are getting sick. They're going through cold, the rain, the wind.
Eso no está bueno, mismo yo que estoy aquí también, ya estoy comenzando a ficar doente.
It's not right. Even me, who I'm here, I'm starting to get sick.
Por favor. O sea, o sea nuestra voz.
Please, hear our voices.
Obrigado.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joslin, followed by Dariani, and then Brian.
I'm sorry, did I, Andrea or?
Um.
Andrea.
It is like hard to, to like not be able to go to school and not be able to make new friends, and it's like really not fun, like when you don't have anybody to hear you out and help you. It's like when you have nobody to listen to you and nobody to like know what you're going to do. And if you just like don't want anybody to help you, it's not like if people wanted to, it's just like you, it's just like you want to be helped. Because some people out there, they want help, but some people don't know if they want the help of them or do they want the help of you. So if you do know what is good for them, you have to help them, because if you don't help anybody, how are you gonna just help them? Like, if you don't like help them, it's not like good or, it's not for them, it's just for you. Know, know that you're gonna, you know, you gotta do something right, and you know you have to like respect and be supportive, and you just have to learn, learn more stuff if you want to like make it in life. But sometimes it's just hard, and sometimes it's just easy, but maybe know this, some people out there just need some help to make it in life, but you just don't know it because people just already have to make it in life so they can be with their family and, and with all their in, family, family, parents and in-laws. It's just not that very creative to like not be able to make any sense of that, because if you don't have anybody to be helpful for you, like if it's not perfect, if it's not like, people need help out there.
Thank you. I need you to finish up your comments. The timer has ended.
Okay.
Okay. Next speaker is.
Thank you.
Joslin, followed by Dariani, followed by Brian.
Oh, that was, okay. Dariani, followed by Brian, and then Lauren.
Dariani, Lauren, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
Dariani.
Is that, is that? Dariani? Is that what that is? If, there's a, there's a video playing or something in the background. If you could please turn that off so that we could hear the speakers, that would be appreciated. The next speaker is Dariani, followed by Brian, followed by Lauren. So if there's no Dariani, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. No Brian, then Lauren.
All right, ready to go? Okay. Hi, my name is Lauren. I'm a member of Southeast King County Mutual Aid. I'm a supporter of.
City of residence for the record, please.
My, my city of residence, Seattle.
Thank you.
But I work with a lot of asylum seekers here that have been living in the Kent region, and I've seen firsthand the kind of deprivation they have to go through because of the systemic failures of state, city, and just local government, county government. Nobody wants to deal with this issue. And if no one deals with this issue, then who's going to deal with it? The federal government obviously isn't. We have to step up and support, you know, these people who are struggling so hard to support themselves. And, you know, as this child demonstrated, they, they just want help to be, to get where they need to be, to be on their feet. And as for the way you can help, accept the permit that King County signs, so the emergency housing permit, so that we can use the, the Connaught Lodge for emergency housing. You don't have to spend any money, you don't have to do anything except, except that permit as soon as possible. A nonprofit is going to help fix up the Connaught Lodge. You really have nothing to lose. I strongly encourage you to do the right thing. Now, if, if there's, are any asylum seekers who would like to speak with the rest of, to the time I have, I welcome them to do so.
Next speaker is Rosario.
And I do.
Followed by, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Followed by Dombele Francisco and Alexander Jimenez.
Really quickly, before you start, I do want to make a clarifying point. The county has not submitted a permit or an application for conditional use on that property. So that is a miss, a piece of misinformation that is on the record. The county controls the property. They have not submitted any applications for any use on that property. So, all right, with that, if you could state your name for the record and your city of residence, we'll go ahead and get started.
Rosario Lopez, and yes, the county, and we understand that the county has not submitted. They have said that they worry about further litigation like it happened before. So I, my understanding is that if you all agree to allow the permit to happen, they will open the hotel. So we ask you to do the right thing, like many folks have said. This is a matter that a lot of people care, residents of Kent, and even outside, you know, like people in Washington care about this. The folks are already residents. Many of them have been living at the Gualida Hotel in Kent. Many folks have been in school, but now they're not able to continue school because of what's going on. They have lost their housing. We are there, and instead of having resources, instead of having social workers, many kids have been traumatized because they had to travel through 10 countries. One of the first friends that I met in Congo, he lost his, his mother while he was on his way to, to the U.S. in the jungle, and he doesn't know what happened to her. They need healing. They don't need further trauma. What we faced on Sunday under the storm, the police came to us and told us that if they don't leave, they're going to be arrested. And it was actually Kent Police Department who showed up. They didn't have interpreters who spoke Lingala, Portuguese, and French. I really ask you to do the right thing. Do not further criminalize these families. And if you do send the parents to jail, what's going to happen to the kids? And then at the end of the day, it's always community, the one that has to show up, and it's just very heartbreaking. If you were there, we have music, we have community. In the middle of all of that suffering, we have love, community, and we take care of each other. And this is, you know, this is what Kent is about. This is what Washington is about. We should continue to do this. Please allow the permit and communicate with them. They're saying that you will not allow it. By sending the police, you're sending a message that you are not allowing it. Please do the opposite. Go visit the families. You take them, talk to us, and get to know, get to know the communities that are living there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ionathan. Oh, he's coming.
Jonathan, resident of Seattle. City Council, I just want to keep it short and sweet. I've also been working to support these community groups, and I just have a couple, a couple key things to ask. First of all, if you could ask, speak with your police and ask them not to sweep the encampment. That is a really basic humane thing to do. Children, families, people with no place to go. Second of all, if you could do, you know, like you said, you responded that you haven't received an application yet, we're just asking, please make a statement and be clear with us that you are going to be willing to do that when you do receive an application. Like that is a, you know, please be straightforward with us. We know what's going on. And second of all, I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. Like, just, just work with us to open the Connaught Lodge. We're not trying to, we're not trying to do much here. Like 90 days is going to, you guys know about the funding that's coming. That's going to really help, but we need to get, we need to get a little further. And this is something that's, you know, it's within the laws that you guys have set and agreed upon, and please just don't, don't be a hindrance to this process. Please help us make this happen. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dombele Francisco, followed by Alexander Jimenez, followed by Darius Landia.
Yeah, if you could, if your name has been called, if I could have you line up, then we'll keep the, keep the speakers moving.
Si eles chamam seu nome, se podem fazer uma fila aqui para termos duas ou três pessoas à espera para ir uma depois da outra. Seria ideal. Quisiera que me conozcan.
Alexander Jimenez, followed by Daris, Daris Landia, and then Segule.
Pode encarar sem.
Português.
Português. Okay.
Boa noite a todos.
Good night to all of you.
Meu nome é Francisco Dombele.
My name is Francisco Dombele.
Estou aqui há quatro meses aqui nos Estados Unidos.
I'm here for four months in the United States.
Só passei aqui, passei mais de onze países só para chegar aqui.
I passed through 11 countries to get here.
Estou aqui a pedir o favor para todo que está aqui com todo respeto.
I am here to ask for a favor with all due respect.
Porque nós estamos aqui a procurar a vivenda.
We're here looking for survival.
Porque estamos aqui aí vezes aparece alguém apaga um mês, hoje estamos aqui, hoje estamos no Tacoma, quente, e o Seattle.
We're here one day, the next day we might be sent to Tacoma, then to Seattle.
Aí fica mais complicado porque não tem como se informar.
That really complicates life for us because there's no way for us to take route.
Porque aqui nos Estados Unidos só seis meses para conseguir um trabalho.
Here in the States, it takes like six months to be able to get a job.
E como que vamos conseguir trabalho se não estamos informados?
How can we get, how can we do that when we're unable to be informed?
Por isso nós pedimos favor.
That really complicates life for us because there's no way for us to take root.
Porque aqui nos Estados Unidos só seis meses para conseguir um trabalho.
Here in the States, it takes like six months to be able to get a job.
E como que vamos conseguir trabalho se não estamos informados?
How can we get, how can we do that when we're unable to be informed?
Por isso nós pedimos favor para nós abrir pelo menos o hotel que está ao lado dos que estão a dormir.
So we ask you at the very least to open the hotel right next to our encampment.
Estamos a passar muito mal com os filhos, com as crianças bem pequenas, três dias ou quatro dias sem tomar banho.
It's been very hard for us, especially with very small children who are going days, sometimes three or four, without even a bath.
Com todo respeito, com todo favor que nós estamos a pedir.
With all due respect.
Para abrir o hotel, por favor.
We're asking, please, please open the hotel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that Dombele? Was that Dombele?
Yes.
Okay. And the next speaker is Alexander Jimenez.
Boa tarde. Gracias. Gracias por atendernos hoy acá.
Thank you for attending us today.
Hace quizás 500 años había seres humanos.
Maybe 500 years ago there was human beings.
Que no podían emigrar, que no podían trabajar, que no podían llegar a algún lugar.
They couldn't immigrate, they couldn't work, they couldn't get to a place.
Bien sea por su credo, por su color de piel, o por algún otro, por alguna otras culturas.
Maybe for their ideology, their color of their skin, or maybe other cultures.
Hoy estamos en el 2024, hace muchos años.
Today we're in 2024.
Una realidad muy diferente.
It's a very different reality.
Creo que cada uno de las personas que estamos acá, aparte de que somos seres humanos igual que ustedes.
Uh, I think everyone that's here, uh, aside from that we're human beings.
Tenemos derecho.
We have the right.
De tener una vivienda, especialmente los niños, de vivir, de estudiar, de tener un hogar.
Especially the kids, to have somewhere to study, to live.
En esta oportunidad nos encontramos acampando porque no tenemos donde vivir.
We find ourselves, uh, pitching tents because we don't have anywhere to live.
Somos inmigrantes nuevos en Estados Unidos.
We're new immigrants in the United States.
De países como Venezuela, Congo, Angola, África.
Countries like Venezuela, Congo, Africa.
Que no tenemos quien nos reciba, no tenemos amigos, no tenemos familiares que nos den trabajo, nos den casa.
We don't have anyone to give us, uh, work or a place to live.
Por eso estamos en la situación que estamos, pedimos en esta oportunidad el apoyo de cada uno de ustedes.
That's why we're in that situation. We ask for your support.
Tenemos una solución muy fácil que es que puedan permitir que el hotel Econo Lodge lo abran.
We have a very easy solution to let the Econo Lodge hotel to be open.
Es irracional donde hay tantas necesidades que un hotel que tiene las capacidades de avergarnos a todos y quizás a mucho más esté cerrado.
It's very irrational for a hotel to be closed, uh, especially when it can house everyone that's here.
No sé si el problema quizás sea de conciencia o sea un problema de burocracia o sea un problema interno del Estado, pero le agradecemos de corazón cada uno que está acá. Puedan abrir el hotel, puedan hacer las gestiones necesarias para abrir el hotel y podamos solventar esta realidad, esta, esta problemática.
Please let us solve this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Daruslandia. Ask that, please hold, please hold your applause so we can continue with the meeting. I'm, I'm gonna ask one last time. Please hold the applause so we can continue with the meeting.
May I? Sim, sou da Nislandia Angola. Sou da Nislandia Angola.
I'm the Nislandia Angola.
Imigrante angolana.
I'm an Angolan immigrant.
Estou aqui, eh, por uma causa única de todos nós que cá estamos.
I'm here for a shared struggle, the same one that brings us all here today.
Eh, nós estamos em nossos países fugindo de alguma causa e
We had to escape from our countries, fleeing for one reason or another.
Chegamos cá nos Estados Unidos, fomos bem recebidos graças a Deus.
We got here to the United States and we're welcome. Thank God.
Mas nós clamamos pela moradia porque nesse momento encontramos-nos na rua.
But we need housing. Right now, we're in the street.
Passando frio.
Passing through cold.
Chuva.
Rain.
Nas tendas, não é muito fácil viver nas tendas.
We're living in tents and it's not easy to live in tents.
Por isso viemos cá pedindo encarecidamente aos senhores que cá estão.
And we came here to ask kindly to you all who are here.
Que nos ajudem, que pelo menos conseguimos entrar para aquele hotel que encontra-se vazio.
That you'll help us so we can enter that hotel that's now empty.
Hoje nós não queremos ser fardo para o governo angolano.
Last thing we want is to be
Ah, para o governo norte americano.
To be a burden for the American government.
Quando nossa, nossa permissão de trabalho sair.
As soon as we get work permits.
Nós poderemos contribuir para o desenvolvimento deste país.
We'll be able to contribute to the development of this country.
Por isso enquanto não podemos trabalhar.
But while we can't work.
Pedimos encarecidamente que nos apoiam, pelo menos que tenhamos um sítio onde poda, possamos dormir em paz.
We kindly ask to be sheltered, somewhere where we can at least lay our heads in peace.
É tudo.
That's all.
Next speaker is, I think it's S.E.G.U.E.L.E., Segule? Uh, Miriam Mesombo and Jose Guerrero. Okay.
Good afternoon, firstly.
Estou aqui pedindo, eu não vou falar muito porque meus irmãos angolanos já acabaram de dizer que só queremos
I'll try not to speak too much because my Angolan brothers have already said a lot of what I have to say.
Só queremos um espaço, pelo menos dormir.
We just want a space where we can sleep.
Porque estamos a passar muito mal por causa do frio e a chuva.
We're going through horrible conditions in the rain and the wind.
Como a minha irmã angolana disse que não é fácil viver naquelas tendas.
Like my mother said, my Angolan mother, it's not easy to live in those tents.
Tem crianças, as mães.
There's children, there's mothers.
A única coisa que nós queremos é só aquele hotel para nós ficarmos um tempinho.
We just want to stay in that hotel and just for a short time.
So.
That's all.
Next speaker is Segule, followed by Jose Guerrero.
Eu sou Inés Buquet.
I am Inés Buquet.
Eu sou angolana, imigra.
I'm an Angolan immigrant.
Eu vim aqui para pedir sua ajuda.
I come to ask you for help.
Já tô aqui quatro dias, não tô a tomar banho.
I've been here for four days. I haven't had a bath.
Já te quatro dias, não tô conseguia fazer ni coconinada, tô cheirando muito mal.
In four days, I haven't been able to take basic care of my hygiene. I'm smelling badly.
Não sei se vou fazer como sou mulher, mas já.
I don't know how I'm going to survive in these conditions.
Tô dormindo a tenda.
I'm sleeping in a tent.
Tá caindo muito chuva.
I'm being rained on a lot.
Tô com duas crianças aqui, uma bebê, uma mais velha de 11 anos.
I'm here with two children. One is a baby and one is 11.
Tô pedindo o favor, ajuda-nos.
I'm asking for your favor to help us.
Tô cheirando muito mal mesmo.
I smell really badly.
Só isso que eu quero pedir.
That's all that I want to ask.
Ajuda-nos para conseguir um lugar para ficar.
Just your help for a place for us to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jose Guerrero, followed by Amadou, followed by Toao, T.O.A.O.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Jose Guerrero, followed by Amadou.
Jose Guerrero?
This one?
Amadou? French translator.
Uh, can, can he go after? We have, we can translate.
Uh, so soon, in one second. Are you French?
Yeah.
Oh, we got our French translator right here. Perfect.
Okay. Do we use the same one?
Yes.
You can stand right there.
Stand to the side?
No.
It'll pick it up?
Yeah.
All right. Buensoir, madame, mesdames, les chefs.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Eh, eu vou me apresentar a vocês, eu sou africana, guiném.
I want to present myself to you. I'm African, I'm Guinean.
Eh, nós somos muito de africanos aqui, sobre a África do Oeste, Guiné, Senegal, Mauritania, Côte d'Ivoire.
Uh, there's a lot of Africans here from West Africa, Senegal, Mauritania, Ivory Coast, Guinea.
Então, primeiro, esses que volei dizer primeiro, e eu vou agora souleguei nosso, nosso, como dizem, dificuldade de envolvente.
Uh, that's what I wanted to say first, and then I wanted to underline our difficulty that we're having.
Eh, durante esses dias lá, durante alguns dias lá, nós temos dificuldade, eh, no país impede porque nós não temos lá onde passar a noite, lá nós passamos a noite na tenta, isso nos fatiga um pouco. Nós dissemos que ainda, normalmente, talvez nós não tenhamos lugar lá, isso nos inquieta um pouco.
Um, we're passing through a really hard time. We've been sleeping in tents. Um, and it's giving us a really hard time.
Isso que, isso que nos encorajou a vir em vocês, les chefs, para nos exprimir que nossa, nossa dificuldade é para nos pedir ajuda.
That's why we wanted to come, um, towards you to express our difficulties and to ask you for help.
Eh, nós sabemos que há muitos países como os países europeus, países africanos, mesmo países asiáticos no país porque eles pedem ajuda.
Uh, we know that there's a lot of people from Africa, from Africa, Europe, Asia, because they're asking for help.
Eh, realmente, nós pedimos ajuda porque nós não temos lá onde dormir, aliás, lá nós estamos assim, isso nos fatiga um pouco. Eh, nós, nós entendemos ainda que nós devemos nos deixar lá, nós viermos em vocês para nos pedirem se há um lugar para, eh, para nos colocar, nós pedimos ajuda porque vocês vão, vocês vão nos dar, eh, como dizem, vocês vão nos dar ajuda.
Uh, so we wanted to come ask you, um, for help if you have another place. Um, because we heard that we were gonna have to leave that place. But if you have another place that we can go, uh, please tell us.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Toao, the last name is Mandunlow. Joao, and then Andalatia.
Andalatia. E depois, Andalatia?
Je vous salue au nom de Jézéry de Nazaret.
Oh, um, I'm saying hello in the name of Jesus of Nazareth.
Il n'y a rien qui peut passer l'amour.
What?
Il n'y a rien qui peut passer l'amour.
There's nothing that can surpass love.
Jézéry da l'amor.
And God is love.
De deixar de pequenos filhos dentro dos frutos com as doenças de, com as doenças de asma, a bronchite, realmente, isso me faz mal no coração.
Um, to leave children under the rain with, uh, bronchitis, it really hurts my heart.
Nós somos os seres imensos.
We are human beings.
Nós vos imploramos ao nome de Jézéry Cristo.
We're, um, pleading with you in the name of Jesus.
Se vocês quiserem, vocês podem nos ajudar a nos dar um lugar para dormir, para que nós possamos lidar contra a frieza.
If, um, you can help us find a place where we can sleep so that we can, um, fight against the cold.
Jézéry vos bença, Jézéry bença a América. Muito obrigado.
Uh, then God bless you and God bless America.
Next speaker is Andalatia, followed by Christelle Loret.
Bonsoir, eu me chamo Clyde Andalatia.
Uh, good evening. My name is Clyde Andalatia.
Eu sou africana, eu venho do Congo Brazzaville.
I'm African. I come from, um, Congo Brazzaville.
Jean profite cette occasion pour remercier le gouvernement américain de m'avoir accepté d'abord l'entrée de son territoire.
Uh, I want to take advantage of this time to, uh, thank the American government, government for welcoming me into their territory.
E ensuite, remercier tous les responsables qui sont ici présents de nous avoir donné cette occasion de pouvoir s'exprimer, de parler de ce que nous vivons.
And then I wanted to thank everyone here who gave us time to express ourselves of what we're living through.
Alors, eu não iria voltar sobre as sofras que nos entorpeciam. Quando nós quitamos o país, os continentes muito longe, nós travessamos as mares, os océanos, nós travessamos as florestas para vir aqui buscar o recorso, porque isso foi o ordem da minha predadoria para a demanda asim.
Um, I didn't, I don't, I don't, I can't go through everything that brought me here, everything in my home country, and then my, um, voyage here, because, um, that is part of my asylum story.
Alors, para ser curto, eh, nós estamos aqui para pedir, para vocês pedirem de ajuda. Nós temos problemas. Esses gente que vocês veem lá, eles dormem fora. Eles dormiram fora para chegar aos Estados Unidos durante alguns meses. Chegar aos Estados Unidos, aos Estados Unidos, em um país de liberdade, eles continuam a dormir fora. O que nós pedimos, nós pedimos de nos abrir o hotel. E depois, três dias, sem se lavar, sem fazer nada, nós temos pelo menos um tratamento humano, porque isso não é humano o que nós vivemos.
Uh, I want to ask you to help us find a place to stay because everyone that you see here is sleeping outside. We've slept outside, um, every day on our, on our, um, journey to the US, and now we're still sleeping outside. What we're living is not human, humane.
Okay. Eu estou quase à fim, mas eu vos recordo que isso não é apenas de chantão. Senão vocês verão que há pequenos filhos hoje que sofrem da rume, que estão arrumados. Há mães de filhos que estão muito do sofrer porque nós não estamos em boas condições. Havia três dias de chuva e nós dormimos todos esses.
We need to have the next speaker.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, everyone who's here is just a small portion of who is at the camp. There's very small children who have, um, colds and, uh, mothers who are sick.
Thank you.
S'il vous plaît, ouvrem-nos l'hôtel.
Next speaker, next speaker is Christelle, followed by Christina, followed by Jesus Romero.
This is Christelle.
Bonsoir, bonsoir. Eu sou a Christelle, congolês.
Uh, good evening. My name is Christelle. I'm congolês.
Eh, eu não vou falar muito. Eu sou mãe de dois filhos. Eu tenho 29 anos.
I am not gonna talk a lot. I'm the mother of two children. I'm 29 years old.
Eu fui meu país por perseguição, eh, a violência.
I left my country because of persecution and violence.
Eh, nós temos sofrido com os filhos durante alguns meses e meses para chegar aqui.
We've suffered with our children for months and months to, um, arrive here.
Eh, durante todas essas sofras, os filhos perguntavam sempre, mãe, quando nós chegaremos aos Estados Unidos, onde nós vamos viver uma vida feliz?
And, um, throughout all that suffering, my children would ask me, mom, when are we going to arrive to the US where we can have a happy life?
Eh, nós chegamos.
And we arrived.
Uma pergunta minha filha me faz ainda, mãe, estás certa que nós chegamos aos Estados Unidos?
And then my daughter asked me, mom, are you sure that we arrived to the US?
Porque é a mesma sofrida que nós continuamos a viver.
Because this is the same suffering that we've been having.
Chaque filho, chaque mãe, chaque criança tem necessidade de lugar para dormir.
Every mom and, um, child and brother needs a place to stay.
O sono é necessário para cada pessoa.
Sleep is necessary, necessary for every person.
E quando você não dorme bem, você cai mal.
And when you don't sleep well, you, um, fall sick.
Imagine que nós não dormimos bem, e nós dormimos mais na frieza, na pluia com os filhos.
So imagine that you're not sleeping well and that you're sleeping outside under, in the cold, under the rain.
Então, eu vos pedo apenas uma coisa.
So I just want to ask you one thing.
Aide-nos.
To help us.
Merci.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christina, followed by Jesus, followed by Elena. Next speaker is Christina. No Christina, then we'll follow up with Jesus Romero. No Jesus Romero, we'll go to Elena. It's M.I.T.I.N.Q.
Hi. So I would just like to start by saying that in the memorandum of understanding
You please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Uh, Elena in Seattle. A memorandum of understanding between King County and the city of Kent ends with saying, whereas the parties agree that once the COVID emergency ends, the county will apply for those permits that may be required by the city's zoning and land use laws for any, for any use other than as a temporary COVID facility, quarantine facility. And whereas, the parties acknowledge that it is the intent of this MOU to lay out the expectations of the parties with respect to the county's operation of its temporary COVID quarantine facility at the property and restoration of the property consistent with the Kent County Code when the COVID emergency ends. And staff has agreed to work in good faith with the city to discuss the property's future use when the COVID emergency ends in order to address negative impacts that use may have on neighboring businesses within the city. The parties acknowledge that after the COVID emergency ends, nothing in this MOU preempts or supersedes the city's authority with respect to closure of the county's temporary and emergency use of the property, permitting requirements that may apply under the Kent City Code when the COVID emergency ends and restoration of the property consistent with the Kent City Code. So technically, you are capable of doing something, you're capable So technically, you are capable of doing something, you're capable of contacting the King County, you're capable of discussing with them what you're going to do with this property. I mean, you're capable of also selling it, I guess. But the other thing I want to say is that I've seen these people go from council to council only to find a temporary solution, and then be kicked out, and basically just pushed away again, only to go to another place. So please, like, we've seen that pushing you and the council members works, that's why we're doing it.
The time is up, thank you. The last two speakers are Inés, followed by Monique.
Inés? Inés?
Okay, last one is Monique. Those are... Okay. Okay, so who are you? Monique, okay, followed by Jesús.
Language?
Lingala.
Lingala?
Yes.
Lingala?
No, francés, francés y lingala, para expresar.
Español? French?
Francés, con expresión sencilla.
Lingala portugués. Lingala portugués francés.
I came here.
Lingala portugués.
I came to ask for help.
Lingala, telesfonia, ¿no?
Mi hijo acaba de pasar por aquí.
My son was just here.
En clase.
Ahí es la escuela.
He wants to go to school.
Él va a la clase el sábado.
Quién va a comenzar la escuela el sábado?
He has to start school on Monday.
Él me sirve el sábado en el hotel a tres.
Nos tiraron del hotel el sábado porque no teníamos un lugar para estudiar.
We need to figure out a place to stay, in a hotel, because we need a fixed location for him to go to school.
Yo vine a pedir ayuda, vine a pedir ayuda.
I came to ask for your help.
Está siendo difícil, nos las mujeres estamos haciendo más de cuatro a cinco días sin tomar, seis días sin tomar baño.
It's extremely difficult, some of the women in my camp, including myself, go four or five days without access to a bath or a shower. We're not using a decent bathroom.
Ayuda, por favor.
Please help us.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Last speaker is Jesús Romero.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Somos un grupo de personas, como ya saben, que venimos aquí a pedirles una ayuda, una mano amiga, ya que nos encontramos con niños.
We are a group of people to ask for help, a helping hand, that, because we are with kids.
Y ustedes tienen la oportunidad de ayudarnos, de dándonos la mano.
You guys have the opportunity to help us, to lend us a hand.
Ya que solamente confiamos con ustedes, que son la única ayuda que tenemos. Nosotros solamente necesitamos un permiso de trabajo para trabajar, para coger nuestro gasto.
What we need is a permit to work so that we can live in this place.
Hay personas que tienen hasta cuatro días que ni siquiera se han duchado.
There's people that have four days that haven't even taken a shower.
Que no tenemos nada ni dónde estar porque nos encontramos en la carpa, acampando.
We are in tents and we don't have anything.
Entonces, con el corazón en la mano, le pedimos la ayuda.
With our heart in hand, we ask for help.
Y que sea Diosito tocándole en su corazón para que nos puedan brindar ese gran apoyo que lo necesitamos como compañeros y como seres humanos.
To lend us a helping hand, like partners and like human beings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was our last public speaker.
All right, thank you, Kim. Okay, with that, we are going to move on in the agenda. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. It's a compilation of work that the council has done at the previous council meetings, had presentations from staff, had the ability to ask questions, and they've moved out of committee without any controversy. It looks like tonight we have consent calendar items A through I. So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item number nine is other business, and we do not have any this evening. Item number 10 is bids. We've got a bid supplying motor control equipment for Horseshoe Storm Pump Station. And joining us this evening is our Public Works Director Chad Behren.
There you go, Chad.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you, we have a bid for new motor control at the Horseshoe Acres Pump Station. Next slide. Pump station's been dutifully down there working for a number of years. Has little red boxes there on the right side are motor controls. We're purchasing new motor controls that will have an electrician install. This is to keep the pumps running for when flows are high in the Green River, drains the south end of Kent. We have bids in, two bids received. The low bid was from Mercal for $134,450 on an engineer's estimate of $121,700, and we recommend award.
All right, any questions for Chad? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam mayor, I move to award the supplying motor control equipment for the Horseshoe Storm Pump Station project to Mercal Inc. And authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That brings us down to the bottom of the agenda, and with that, council, we are adjourned.